Good to go?
Yep.
All right, it is Monday, June 17th. It's 7:30 and I call the meeting of the Brainerd City Council to order. Administrator Broyles, would you call the roll? Or no, Tony's gonna do it.
Johnson.
Okay.
Here.
Chesak.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunick.
Here.
Terry.
Here.
Stingline.
Here.
Bevins.
But...
Here.
Bado.
Here, please rise for the Fledges of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number... Yes, sir?
So we're off?
Yeah, we are. Item four, well, we got stumbled on this one last time. Let's see how we do this time. Item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a move to approve?
So much.
Motion by Stunick, second by Stingline, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. Notice to the public that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion by Kara.
Second.
Second by O'Day. Any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, will you call the roll?
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes, the consent calendar is adopted. Item six is council committee reports. Item six A is personal finance committee. Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got nine items on the agenda today, the first of which is to consider a request from the Employee Wellness Committee, and the motion is to close city offices from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. on September 19th for the employee appreciation event at Memorial Park this year, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
It's the same length of time we did last year at Lum Park, and it'll be the same type of event, same type of food. I hope you all can make it.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, approves. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is a fire truck chassis, and the motion is to authorize the fire department to order a fire truck chassis, funding to come from the capital fund, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a fire truck in the capital plan for 2025, but just how long it takes things to get built and ordered and get in line, we gotta order the chassis for the 2025 truck here in 2024, so it'll cost us about $149,000 this year. By the time the fire truck is all built, it'll be $550,000 to $575,000.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Chair, will they guarantee the price? That far, this far out? I mean, do they lock us in?
No, that's why it's a range. We're expecting it to be in there.
Yeah. Isn't that great? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Thank you, please proceed.
Thank you. Next up was staff requesting guidance on what to do when people approach them to purchase a city-owned parcel of land. And the motion out of committee was to go with option two in the agenda, where the motion is to hire an appraiser to compete in a... complete an appraisal on the property each time somebody asks, and return to the council for direction on what to offer the party. If acceptable, return to the council for approval, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson.
So it was thought we could go with sell it for estimated market value, or get an appraisal, or maybe send it over to the EDA and have them list it, and there's all these options, but there's so many variables in what type of purchaser and land user would come to the city that we're gonna start out with getting an appraisal, like $500 to $2,000 per time, come to the council, and then decide what to do from there. Because sometimes we might have a developer trying to expand a business into a city-owned parcel that maybe we'll sell it to him for a dollar. And maybe sometimes it's more appropriate to sell them at market rate, so I think it'll come to the council, and we'll kind of make a case-by-case judgment on this and maybe make a change in the future.
Thank you. Chairman O'Day.
Yeah, I just have a question. So we do have some industrial lots that we have marketed. If you're going to bring jobs into the industrial park, we've marketed those at a dollar an acre. Is that now kind of off the table with this new policy?
I think, and maybe James or Jesse could correct me, but I think since the EDA is already marketing those properties, it wouldn't be done administratively at City Hall. That goes through the EDA. But like, we have onesy-twosy lots here and there that sometimes people ask us about. James, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Chesak.
Yes. Is this a policy? I heard Mike O'Day say it was a policy.
Seems like a policy to me because it's a motion.
I think you have a point. That's why I'm asking.
So nowhere in the motion did I call it a policy. It was just to direct staff to hire an appraisal, appraiser anytime somebody comes to us to buy a city-owned parcel. But I, if we wanted to turn it into a policy, I'd fine with that.
I'm just asking.
Yeah. It seems like it kind of would be whether we call it that or not.
It'd be council direction, which would be the same thing, maybe?
Yeah.
Case by case.
Anything else, Jeff?
Well, being that we're all expendable and can come and go, and so can staff, I think we should have a policy. It's pretty simple. I mean, just so it's not having to go back and look through the many minutes and see what the motion was. Again, I'm not opposed to this, but...
Do you have any problems with that?
No, you wanna draft up a policy and...
Oh, they like it.
Look, they'll draft...
It's a policy.
So I'll add to the motion, if I may, Mr. President, to direct staff to draft up a policy as such.
Thank you. Second, are okay with that?
Second, yep.
Okay, so it's a policy. But they can be changed by the next week's council.
There you go.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of this new policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. It actually was in the book as requesting guidance, so that's... Yeah. Mr. Chair, it's yours.
I think we guided them, Mr. President. Next up is hiring a part-time administrative specialist, and the motion is to approve the hiring of Brenda Hert... Hartnek, I did better on Wednesday, as our part-time administrative specialist effective June 18th, 2024, at step one of the administrative specialist wage grid, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Chairman Johnson.
This is the position we've been working on. This exact position wasn't budgeted, but with the budgetary savings realized by not backfilling the assistant planner position, we are saving in the realm of $75,000 to $80,000 on personnel costs with this move.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Mr. President, next one, just in the nick of time, we have a memorandum of agreement for Juneteenth. The motion is to approve the attached Juneteenth MOA with the United Steelworkers Union representing our hydro facility, employee, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Any comments or discussion? Mr. Chair.
The MOA states that the union will trade one floating holiday to have Juneteenth off paid, so nobody expects somebody to be at the dam.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Chesak.
I don't know if Chairman Johnson can answer this, and it's more of a technical question. Is there much of a difference between a MOA and a MOU? I mean, Chris, I just...
I don't know, Jeff. That would be a legal question.
I don't know if it's... I can get back to you guys and ask later. I was just curious if anybody knew here, so...
Sure. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is MOA with the IBW Admin Support for the Transit Operations Specialist Position, and the motion is to approve the MOA with the IBW Administrative Support Union, setting the 24 to 26 wage for the Transit Operations Specialist Position, further to authorize staff to begin the hiring process with an estimated hire date around September 23rd, 2024, and further to authorize staff to hire a part-time temporary employee to assist the Transit Division while the Transit Operations Specialist hiring process is conducted, and further to utilize the Transit Operations Specialist Wage Grid when hiring the part-time position, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
This is just a follow-up on what we've worked on the last couple meetings of adding this position back into the fold, and we think it'll be a late September hire, so we'll hire a temporary until then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is a separation agreement, and the motion is to approve the separation agreement between the City of Brainerd, Ronald Myers Jr., and Law Enforcement Labor Services as presented, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
You received a confidential email from our legal counsel on this matter, so we've got nothing else to say, but if you have any questions, ask.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next up is a discussion of a request for Habitat to use the City of Brainerd statewide affordable housing aid money, and the motion out of committee was to advertise publicly... direct staff to advertise publicly the available funds and consider options from giving people the opportunity to issue proposals and consider those proposals at a future meeting, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Chairman Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion? Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Habitat for Humanity approached us with a proposal of building a home or two in Brainerd with this money, and it's a great proposal, and I love the idea, but when we talked about it at committee, we decided this was public dollars. Nobody else was given an opportunity to submit a proposal, so we're gonna open it up. Anybody who has an idea of how to improve housing in the area can submit their proposal, we'll consider them as a council. I imagine Habitat's proposal will be pretty competitive based on their track record, but we're opening it up for all of the public.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Chesak.
Is there a deadline here? Just opening it up for a certain amount of time?
I don't think there is that yet.
We didn't, we didn't set a deadline with this motion or this direction.
Okay. It'll come back? Is that what you're expecting?
I, that's what I would expect to happen. Maybe James can...
Yeah, I was kind of... Yeah, what I was thinking is, is once it's advertised, you know, roughly about a month there, and then it would be that, at that next council meeting, that there'd be consideration. So roughly about a month is what I was considering.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ninth item, this took us almost 10 minutes, sorry about that, is setting a 2025 capital planning workshop, and the motion is to set a budget workshop on June 26th? 25th at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall to discuss the 2025 capital, and I so move.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Any discussion on the capital planning workshop?
I actually have the 26th on my calendar.
Yes. Evidence, June 26th, Wednesday, June 26th.
Wednesday, June 26th. I'd like to amend the motion to the appropriate motion that came out of committee, Wednesday, June 26th. That's...
Who's this chair?
I don't know anymore.
We're watching.
All right. So the, it is June 26th, Wednesday, at what time?
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. here in chambers?
Yep.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Chair?
I have a report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item 6B, Safety and Public Works Committee, Chairman Mike O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. Safety and Public Works, we just had four items tonight. First item was a change order and final pay request for improvement 2112 North Brainerd Project. Motion coming out of staff was to recommend approval of the requested change order and final pay request for improvement 2112 North Brainerd Reconstruction. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
Well, this is, if you look at page after the agenda request in our packet, it kind of lists out the various cleanup items that were done since our last change order or payment on this. This total change order is $5,169.08, and it brings it still underneath the original bid by $56,653.77, so we're still under budget for what was actually bid on this one.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And the grass is starting to look better.
Looks better than last year.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next item we had was a bid awarding for improvement 23-11 O Street Outfall Repair. Motion coming out of committee was to award the bid base plus alternate, and this is, I'll explain this, in the DeChantel Excavating in the amount of $62,865.50. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Mr. Chair.
So there's two parts to this project. One is the actual outfall repair from O Street to Rice Lake. That bid came in at $46,000. We budget about $50,000 a year for these types of projects, so that would be under budget, but there's some flooding that happens at that intersection right next to the outfall. The repair of that street in, at the same time as this project would be a total of $62,865.50, so fixing a flooding issue along with this, we found this would be more bang for our buck. It's only gonna be more expensive in the future, so get it done now.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
Thank you. Next was a resolution for the 2025 Transit Operating and Capital Grant. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend adoption of the attached resolution entering into the agreement with MINDOT for providing transit services, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Stingline. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
Say this is the same agreement we've had with them. It's highly subsidized by the state. Minnesota's share being 95%, 95, 90% respectively for operating costs and capital costs.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Chesak.
Yeah, I think everybody knows that without this kind of funding, we don't have a transit service, and I think the dollars here are significant. Of course, this is from state revenue, the state taxpayers, and if we wanna aid the community in having transit, this is an absolute must, because we know what it costs just at our local level with that small percentage split between three different entities right now, so I just, I guess for the sake of people who rely on the bus, appreciate the fact that we have this money available.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Well, yeah, a resolution. If you would, Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes. Resolution is adopted. Please proceed.
Mr. President, our fourth and final item was just direction on active code enforcement cases. We have a number of cases tonight. Motion coming out of committee was to go along with staff's recommendation on all five, along with the changed recommendation for 523 Grove Street. Recommendation by staff was changed to stop citations until September 1st, and then issue $300 a month citations until the work is complete. I so move.
Second. We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Chesak. Any discussion? Mr. Chair.
These are five different properties with different issues going on with junk and debris, structure issues, blight, different things like that. The main difference with 523 Grove Street is somebody did show up at City Hall between the time that the agenda was released and today, I believe it was Friday, and filled out paperwork for a new permit to finish the structure that they were being cited for. So that was the first that staff had heard from him. Changed the recommendation to give them some extra time to finish.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Please proceed.
End of report.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, unfinished business. Item 7A is the call for applicants. I'll turn it over to the Honorable Mayor Bado.
Thank you, President Bevins. The following applications are available on our website, so you can join our wonderful boards and/or commissions. The Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2026, two terms expiring 2025. Park Board, one term expiring 2026. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2026. We also have one term on the Economic Development Authority expiring 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and as council president, I have one commission with two terms, the Parking Commission, one term to expire 2026, and one term to expire in 2028. Item seven, unfinished business, 7B, is the final reading and public hearing of proposed ordinance 1566, and consider a tree policy. Mr. Kravik, you wanna bring us up to speed as to where we are this evening?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the proposed ordinance and policy addresses the city's plan for removal, disposal, and injection of ash trees within the city. The proposed tree ordinance and policy were also revised to make it clear that the city is responsible for the right-of-way tree removal. Again, every untreated ash tree is expected to die within the city within seven to 10 years, so important to start moving forward with this. Staff has identified 13 trees in Kiwanis for treatment and another six of those for removal. Staff has also identified five trees in Bain Park for treatment that are high priority for shade areas, so with that, I will be sending out an RFP to contractors this week for what those potential treatment costs look like. So with that, staff recommends conducting the final reading of proposed ordinance 1566, and to dispense with the actual reading, hold a public hearing and approve proposed ordinance 1566, and then after that would be approving the revised City of Brainerd tree policy, and I can answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Kravik or staff, any other staff?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak.
Yes, Mr. Kravik, the tree removal of these ash trees with the infestation, what happens to those, that they have to be treated in some way to get rid of the bug?
So if they're ordered for removal, it's typically recommended to chip them up to help slow things down. That's what's recommended, that's what we'll recommend from our Streets Department. However, we're already in an infected zone, so the big thing is we're not supposed to transport any of this out of the area. So if people do keep it in areas for firewood, you know, it can spread the disease faster or the EAB faster, but again, it's not illegal to do that, but it is recommended to chip.
May I?
May. Mr. Chesak.
And then who is our current tree inspector?
That would be myself.
And you have time to go around inspecting all the trees?
I also delegate that as well, and yeah, Sean and our Streets crew has also gotten that certification.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, the first item, the first order of business on this item is to look for a motion to conduct the final reading of proposed ordinance 1566 pertaining to tree disease control and to dispense with the actual reading, which must be unanimous, to actually dispense with the actual reading.
So moved.
Motion by Stingline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion passes unanimously. It is 7:53, and we will now open the public hearing on proposed ordinance 1566 regarding trees. And if you're online and wish to speak on this ordinance, star three will make note that you are wanting to speak, and then star six will unmute you. I will ask a second time if there's anybody either in the audience or online who wishes to speak on proposed ordinance 1566. And I will ask a final time. Anybody wishing to speak? And I will close the public hearing, and I will look for a motion to approve ordinance or adopt ordinance 1566.
So moved.
Motion by Terry, is there a second? Second by Stingline. Any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson. Johnson.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Stingline.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes. That ordinance is adopted. On the revised City of Brainerd tree policy, anything, Mr. Kravik, you want to add?
Nothing to add.
All right, we're looking for just an approval of the policy? Mr. Kravik? Just a regular approval?
Yep, just an irregular approval.
Is there a motion to approve the tree policy?
So moved, Johnson.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunek, Chairman Johnson?
I re-up my offer to serve on the Tree Committee for the City of Brainerd.
President Bevins?
You're not tall enough.
Things are getting, Jeff, things are getting out of control in PNF, please take the floor.
Always seem to. The committee, do we determine the amount of, the length of term on these now, or do we just say there's a committee and it's no sunset, or no term, or anything like that? Would it be appropriate to?
It's eternal.
It's...
I don't think...
The time of a redwood tree's life, or?
Yeah, I suppose, 3,000 years.
Oh, two-year term?
How long you want to serve, Mr. Chair?
I like the redwood idea.
The redwood idea, as long as the redwood?
I don't know, yeah, two or four years sounds like a fair term.
How about, let us...
It's up to the mayor to appoint, so we'll let him think about it, and we can move on.
You can come back, Mr. Mayor.
I already have the idea.
Oh, Mr. Mayor?
We shall plant a tree, and as long as you may keep that tree alive, you may be on the committee.
As long as songs are written about the committee. Mr. Mayor will give us two years.
What did you just say? I know you didn't pay any, you never pay any attention. Four years seems like a great term.
Well, Mr. Mayor says four years. There you go. Any further questions? Hearing none, to approve the policy, and Gabe Johnson as the liaison, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is item 7C, the final reading and conducting a public hearing of Proposed Ordinance 1567 and 1568 cannabis and off-sale liquor. This is, Mr. Kravik, could you please bring us up to speed on this ordinance?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So Proposed Ordinance 1567 requires new commercial dispensaries in commercial zoning districts, be it located at least 100 feet from a school, residential treatment facility, or an attraction within a public park that is regularly used by minors, including a playground or athletic field. That's taken right from state statute what we're allowed to do. A conditional use permit would be required for new dispensaries within 300 feet of the same facilities. Also, within that ordinance, the growing and manufacturing of cannabis products would be allowed in the general industrial zoning district by conditional use. And also off-sale liquor would be removed from the TN2, traditional zoning district, to align with the sale of adult-use cannabis. So that's, the first ordinance was reviewed and recommended by the Planning Commission. The second one was brought before the PNF Committee, which is Proposed Ordinance 1568, which allows for a maximum of two adult-use cannabis retail businesses in Brainerd, and imposes a $500 initial registration fee and a $1,000 renewal registration fee. So with that, staff does recommend doing these separately, but recommends conducting the final reading of each ordinance and to dispense with the actual reading, hold a public hearing for each ordinance, and approve each proposed ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Kravik, any questions of staff on either of these two ordinances?
Question?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the liquor off-sale, we're kind of pulling back, being a little bit more restrictive. It would affect Mill Avenue Liquor, which is currently listed for sale, but it could be a existing non-conforming, if somebody buys it and continues to operate it as a liquor store, it doesn't lapse for one year or whatever, that business itself could still operate?
It could, yes, if it lapses for more than a year at that point, then it would be, have to be a use that conforms to it if it's removed from here.
But if the current individual tries to sell, trying to sell it, operates it until he sells it, and they operate it as a liquor store?
Yep, no issues, it's only, I guess, if they'd want to expand the building, but no issues as is where it's placed if it goes from one liquor store to the next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, any further questions of staff? Any further questions of staff? Okay, so we're going to take ordinance 1567, and this is the, the purpose and intent of this ordinance is to regulate the time, place, and manner of the operations of the cannabis, of a cannabis business and an off-sale alcohol business within the city limits of Brainerd. So that's the one we're handling first, so we're looking for a motion to conduct the final reading of Proposed Ordinance 1567 and dispense with the actual reading, which must be unanimous.
So moved.
Motion by Stangline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by O'Day, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Che...
Mr. Chesak?
I just wanted to understand, I'll ask for your guidance, if there's questions about the particular ordinance, would you care for them to be asked now or before the...
Well, we just went through questions of staff, did you have some other ones that you were withholding?
Um, yeah, I guess.
Okay, well, no, now's the time, we've got a motion and a second.
Thank you. Are we required to have a dispensary in the City of Brainerd, Mr. Kravik?
We are required by population, if the county would reach its maximum of six, we wouldn't be required, that's essentially in the second ordinance that's in there. But the City of Brainerd, if Crow Wing County, say, has zero at the time, we would be required to have a dispensary then.
And then what is the timeframe for the county to have six or none? I mean, when...
There's, there's no timeframe, so potentially, an ordinance could have been made or recommended by the PNF Committee, that once a county reached this max, then Brainerd would not have to accept them, but by population of 12,500, and since we're over that, we are required to have two, to my, to my knowledge, that was what the, it'd be the main person with the Cannabis Office of Registry had stated to me.
Oh, may I?
You may, Mr. Chesak.
So then if the county hasn't proceeded with their cannabis dispensary ordinance, which I don't think they have, could you confirm that? I don't think they have, right?
They have not.
Okay, and then they're sitting there without even an ordinance to address it, and we have our ordinance, we're obligated to do it, even if we didn't have an ordinance, somebody approached us, we would then have to draft this ordinance at that point?
Well, right, right now, it's, they're anticipating January 1st at the earliest. I know the Planning Commission was interested in it, at one point they were talking about allowing them with the medical marijuana restrictions into it, with people that had maybe social equity considerations, allowing them earlier than January 1st. I'm not sure that's going to happen anymore, so right now, we're looking at, essentially needing this in place by January 1st, as that's the date that they would be allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak, a question, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, this is only, this is on the final reading, which again, must be unanimous, or we will have to read the ordinance. Any further discussion just on the reading? Any further discussion just on the reading? Hearing none, all in favor of the final reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries unanimously. Now it's 8:01, and we will open the public hearing on ordinance 1567. And we will ask again, if you're online, star three will notify us that you wish to speak, and star six will unmute you. I'll ask a second time, and I'll ask a final time. It's 8:02, I will close the public hearing, and now we're looking for a motion to, to adopt ordinance 1567.
So moved, Johnson.
Second.
Johnson, second by Stangline, any discussion on the adoption of the ordinance? Any discussion on the option of the ordinance? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
No.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stangline?
Yes.
Bevins?
No, and the ordinance is adopted. Next up, we're going to go with item 1568, which is a proposed, uh, let me just get to the highlights on this one. Eh, I gotta scroll down. All right, so these, what will this one do, Mr. Kravik?
It, so there's a lot of definitions in here in order, if there's future considerations for, for licensing or registration. So this is for registration, it's not for licensing, it states the one that actually licenses them. So this would allow for a maximum of two adult-use cannabis retail businesses in Brainerd, and then it also imposes the $500 initial registration fee and $1,000 renewal fee, which is the maximum the city can have for their, their registration fees.
Thank you, Mr. Kravik, any questions of staff on this ordinance? Okay, hearing none, we will look for a motion to hold the final reading for Proposed Ordinance 1568.
So moved.
Motion by Stangline, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Johnson, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the final reading, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign, and the final reading has been held, we will now open the public hearing at 8:04, and ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak on Proposed Ordinance I'll ask a second time, is there anybody who wishes to speak on Proposed Ordinance And we will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance 1568.
So moved.
Motion by O'Day, is there a second? Johnson, second, any discussion? Hearing none, Tony, please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chesak?
No.
O'Day?
Yes.
Stunek?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Stangline?
Yes.
Bevins?
No, that ordinance is adopted. We will now move on to 7D, which is discussing the Strike Contingency Plan Executive Summary, and I will call on our City Administrator, Mr. Broyles, to give us, to give us the lowdown.
Thank you, Mr. President, the work group has prepared a three-page executive summary, I won't read it all, but I just want to point out a couple things, this is not unique to a specific bargaining unit, this is a three-page summary for how we would address any potential strike with any bargaining unit. We divide it into four categories, the first is pre-strike preparation, and basically during this period, this is a, this phase begins when mediation is, is filed in anticipation of a strike, and it's really focusing on, on outlining operational needs and security measures. So we would be, we would be considering things like when a strike might occur, assessing vulnerabilities, prioritizing services, we would look at staffing and cross-training of employees, standard operating procedures, we would develop contingency strategies, update all communication documents, and try to determine what our best and last offer might be. We would also coordinate with county and city emergency services for potential strategies, and we would also try to formulate some financial projections, as far as estimated costs, revenue losses, and some metrics that would reflect the same. The second phase of this would be when the union actually files for a strike, so this begins when they obviously send a notice to the Bureau of Mediation Services. During this period, we would finalize details for coverage, operational coverage, we would distribute notices to all employees, union employees, supervisory staff, and other employees, finalize plan for security measures with all stakeholders, finalize public notice and messaging, and coordinating with law enforcement and other relevant agencies. The third section is the actual strike operations. During this period, we would monitor picket lines, and access points, monitor safety, and communication would be paramount to all of these, but communication would be paramount to this as well. Communication with stakeholders, unions, employees, and community, and the community members as well. The last is post-strike recovery, this is when the strike is over, we're transitioning back to normal operations. We would take this time to kind of do a hot wash and evaluate the effectiveness of the security measures during the strike, debrief security personnel, and transition back to normal operations. Highlighted a few of the, the common pitfalls, I'm not going to go into those, you can, if you have questions, please ask. And then the last page is really media relations, and I think this will be a critical component. Part of our coordination would be with the county PIO, they've offered their services to help in the event of, of a strike, to help with our messaging and communication. But the key components of the media strategy would be spokesperson designation, monitor the media, provide rapid, honest responses, message consistency amongst all people speaking, press releases and statements, and then media training for appropriate staff. So again, this is just a strategy for a general strike for any bargaining unit. We would specifically, we're specifically, we just had another meeting today with our work group, our next meeting is Monday, to start reviewing the final document for our current IEBW potential strike. So pending your questions, that's all I have.
Any questions of staff on the Strike Contingency Plan Summary?
Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chesak?
I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Mr. Chesak, you're, you're kind of on that, not kind of, you are on the committee, please.
I just want to thank Nick for his leadership and all the other staff, Chris has been very involved with Brittany, they, it's, it's remarkable, we have a meeting on Monday, and then a Thursday, and of course, then after that on Monday, and you look at the summary and all the different documents that have been shared, you know, even Kara Terry, the other commission members from Public Utilities, Angland, Erickson, and O'Day have all been attending and staying on top of things with all our other staff, like our two chiefs, and it's just been quite a learning experience, and the participation, and of course, Patrick was, has been invaluable, so I just want to thank everybody.
Thanks, Mr. Chesak, any other questions of staff or comments? Hearing none, thank you very much, we will move on to item 7E, direction requested on 15106 Riverside Drive, I believe this is our City Engineer, Public Works Director, Dean, anything you'd like to bring us up to speed on this issue?
Thank you, Mr. President, staff received a request to get clarification from the council on 15106 Riverside Drive, staff is under the understanding we are to begin discussions with the county on orderly annexation regarding the entire Riverside Drive corridor, and update to be later discussed on this agenda. Currently, the property owner at 15106 is connected to city water and sewer, they have not petitioned to annex yet, and is paying double utility rates. Staff has put a couple options for the council to consider for direction to staff as listed in the agenda item, or would be open to other direction as provided by the council.
Okay, any questions of staff on what they're looking for? I, I just have one, and that's, Jesse, we did receive the minutes from, I believe it was early 2000s, where council has required on this project that if you're hooking up to water and sewer, or public utilities, you must annex first, and somehow that didn't happen on this one, so if we decide to let them sit and wait until the orderly annexation agreement, would we not have to rescind that? I guess that's really more for Joe's question, Joe for question, since we've required other people to annex first, and if we choose not to on this one, does that, does that create a conflict? It looks to create a conflict in, in my mind, especially for the people that have annexed.
We've got obviously an inconsistency there that ought to be recognized and acknowledged, and then if, but it seems to me that if you're actually pursuing orderly annexation, it makes sense to do it that way, I don't think there's a problem given, given the scenario, as long as you acknowledge that it's going on, and that you're moving towards orderly annexation includes that property, I think you're fine.
Okay, how long does orderly annexation take?
Depends on the two parties trying to get orderly about it.
Well, it's not two parties, right, it's, it's a policy for everybody who's outside the city.
Well, it's, it's between the township and the city.
Right.
Once the township and the city reach an agreement, then it's just a matter of sending the agreement to the state, and if it's an ordinary orderly annexation agreement, the state cannot modify it.
Okay.
It's just a matter of giving it to them, and 30 or 60 days later, they send it back, and you're good to go.
And with this orderly annexation agreement, be it just one parcel at a time, over time?
That is entirely up to the parties, quite often, they are not one parcel at a time, they can be multiple parcels, it all depends on the terms and conditions of the agreement, whether it's development-led, or it's utility-led, I mean, there's, there's all sorts of ways to negotiate an orderly annexation agreement.
Mr. Bevins?
Yeah, Mr. Chesak, I, this is probably a question for staff, I see you have the sack-and-whack charges indicated on there, but you do not mention the hookup fee, which, maybe two-part question, if we proceed with orderly annexation, there would still be sack-and-whack and also the hookup fee, is that correct, if that gets agreed upon?
We would look for the council for direction on what you would like to establish for the connection fee for the folks that we are bringing into the city.
So we could wait, or, or adjust it accordingly to whatever we thought was appropriate, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
We can give you a recommendation, but it'd be up to the council to establish.
Up to this point, though, everybody who has connected has paid sack-and-whack, sans the one we're talking about, has paid sack-and-whack and the connection fee, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chesak, you have the floor.
If, if we were going to proceed with orderly annexation, there's no certainty that that will come to fruition, and I, I would like to see us go with a letter to the property owner, and at that time, have the annexation process started, or I believe it's called a request to annex or whatever, and then, I think that's part of your recommendation, if I'm not mistaken.
Item one, yes.
Item one, okay, and then I'd like to see us go, have the sack-and-whack paid for, of course, and then we forego the connection fee until we determine what the orderly annexation looks like, to see what we do there, and then kind of put that on hold.
Okay, is that just a wish, or is that a motion?
Well, I would, I guess at this point, it's kind of, we're discussing this, if somebody were, you know, I'd, I'd be happy to make a motion, but you know how that goes sometimes, I, I mean, I don't care if it gets beat or anything, I just think we should do something, so.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Chesak? I mean, I like what you're thinking, I, I like just using the fee, the connection fee that we've used previously, which I think Mr. O'Day thought it was somewhere in the $12,000 range, to be consistent.
Again, though, if we're going to go with an orderly annexation, we have to make that determination, and I would like to just wait until we make that determination, and if we have to, come back with this all by itself, if we don't get that orderly annexation agreed on by the county, and then just kind of put that part on hold.
I don't think they would, I don't know that they would be part of the fee set.
No, I'm not, no, the orderly annexation is with the county.
Right, but I don't think the fees would be.
No, no, they wouldn't be.
So I'd stick by, I think it should be what it was last time, no matter what the county says.
It's not a matter of what the county says, Mr. Bevins, it's that, are we going to be able to proceed with orderly annexation? And if we are, then we can determine the connection fee, that's what I was talking about, not, the annexation is just kind of like, if it happens, then we go back to this property along with all the rest, and make that determination.
Sure.
Yeah, that's where I was going with that.
Yeah. And Mr. O'Day?
I think I see where both of you guys are coming from, but I, I think I agree with Jeff, just because with the orderly annexation, not setting that fee now, we still have kind of more room to negotiate what that looks like as we move through the orderly annexation, and it's still on the table as an option for not just this property, but all the, all the rest of the properties in the future, whether we want to change that now or later, or keep it the same, maybe we do end up doing that, but I think Jeff has a point on keeping that off, at least for now.
Okay? I'll just get this up that center, I'll move that we send a letter, they have to start to initiate the annexation process, and if they don't, then we shut them off, or whatever pollimeter is, it was indicated, and then of course, we have the sack-and-whack when that's all through the, or annexation process, and then we just hold off on the connection fee. I so moved.
Second.
At this time, hold.
We have a motion by Chesak, and second by Stangline, any discussion? Any discussion, I mean, I, I like the motion, I, I don't like the fact that they get to connect without any connection fee.
Well, they'll be paying 200% until we determine at a later date.
That...
I mean, that's, that's what I'm thinking now, does that happen?
But that's not part of the motion, and that's also, they'll be in the city once they annex.
Okay, then, but they'll be paying 200% until that happens, yeah, okay, I, I mean, I understand, we're having a discussion here on the motion, so...
Yeah, I, I think they should just pay the connection fee that everybody else paid. Mr. Chair, Chairman Johnson?
I, I agree with the motion to tell them that you have to annex in to get on our water, I agree with getting the sack-and-whack fees, the connection fee, I'm kind of torn on, like, why not just charge it today, I don't know, but I see we can still charge the appropriate, in my opinion, the appropriate fee down the road still, so we're still leaving that option out there, so I support the motion.
Chairman, Chairman O'Day?
Question for attorney, Mr. Lengel? Mr. Lengel, with this motion, the way it is, with this, if this individual was to annex before we figure out this agreement, this, this orderly annexation agreement, would they essentially be able to forego that $12,000 or $17,000 charge, or would we still have that on the table? Would we have to specifically leave that on the table with this motion?
The $12,000 charge, you're talking about the connection fee?
Correct.
Well, it would be cleaner if it was, if it was expressly just dealt with in the motion, I mean, this is an odd deal, he's already connected.
Right, that's what, I'm wondering if, if he gets through his annexation process, so he, if, if he so decides, and then we get to this point where we're now going through the orderly annexation, is it too late to go back then and say, okay, wait, now, now you have to pay? Because that's how I was seeing it, but the more I think about it now, maybe we wouldn't
It's just, it's kind of odd saying you have to come in, pay these fees, and we're not going to tell you what the real, the end fee is going to be until maybe kind of sometime later. And then we'll decide what it's going to be, maybe. I mean.
Kind of want to wrap.
If I'm a property owner, I'm looking for some certainty here whether I'm happy with it or not.
I amend my motion.
I'd really wish you would.
Motion is to send a letter, having them annex within 30 days, go through that process. If not, we take care of the meter, all that good stuff. And then they pay the sack and whack and we charge the, the previous rate, I believe, was 12 something. Can we determine that after the motion?
I, I think we can. How much was it, Jesse?
11,300 was the last, 11,300 was the last one that was paid.
Yeah.
Part of the motion.
Yeah, that's what everybody paid.
And I so moved, whoever's seconded.
Okay, we have a, we have a corrected motion by Mr. Chesak. The second was by Stengline. Stengline?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Chairman Johnson?
Thank you. I still support the motion, but I, I don't have it in front of me. I don't remember the last time I read it, but I thought the fee was like $19,000.
The proposed was?
The, based on ordinance from 2004.
Mr. Dean, anything you can shed?
The, the original fee was 11,300. Then you add several years of interest, it was 17,000 and change. The last fee that was paid roughly in 2010 was 11,300 that we were able to find. Not sure the documentation behind why it was 11,300, just knowing that the documentation that we'd seen was paid 11,300. So that was the last one.
Are we charging 11,300 to $2,003?
$2,010.
$2,010, not $20, $24.
Not $20, $20. There's been no additional interest on Jeff Chesak's proposal.
Yeah, I'll, I'll support it. I do think they should pay the additional interest, but the taxpayers had to pay interest on the, on the debt service.
I understood. Mr. Dean?
If I can ask for some additional clarification, would staff be offering the ability for them to defer that connection charge and whack and sack over 10 years through the inability of assessment or all at once?
What did the people do in 2010?
I believe they paid it all at once.
Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chesak's your?
deferments on this, I believe.
The motion includes deferments.
Thank, yes.
10 years. At what interest rate?
We would likely use the interest rate that we're using for our reconstruction for the assessments for this year, roughly. I'm not sure.
We don't know that yet.
But there would be interest on the 11, 11,300 going forward if they choose the 10-year defer, based on today's construction.
Unless they don't pay it and come back in 10 years.
Well, there is that. Then they make the, the.
At least it's on their tax rate.
The mow law, the mow your lawn list. Everybody understand the motion? The motion is to send a letter, Mr. Chesak, follow me with this, to the property owner at 15106, informing them that they are required to annex to the city limits, to remain connected to the city's water. They'd have 30 days to provide a petition to annex, voluntarily annex to staff so they could be presented to the council, pay the sack and whack fees, and the connection fee of 11,300.
Interest rate to be determined?
Interest rate to be determined by the current construction rate.
And then, of course, also included is the letter, after 30 days, they, I believe, have the water meter removed?
That's not. That was the first part of it.
Okay.
Any questions as to what we're voting on? Any questions? We have a motion, we have a second, it's been corrected, it's been discussed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dean, thank you, Mr. Chesak, thank you, Ms. Stengline. Next up, well, it's a tough one, I understand. Item, item eight is new business, a first reading of proposed ordinance 1569 vacant building registry ordinance. Mr. Cranbeck, bring us up to speed on this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. So structures placed on the vacant building registry as proposed are those that are vacant with significant property maintenance, maintenance issues and violations. The proposed ordinance would charge a fee of $7,000 for properties placed on the registry, but it does give the property owner the ability to make corrections and not incur the fee. So with that, staff does recommend to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1569 and to dispense with the actual reading. And I can answer any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Cranbeck. Any questions of staff regarding the vacant building registry? Mr. Chesak?
Yes, on subdivision three, registration shall be submitted on forms provided by the Director of Regulatory Services. We don't have that person. It's supposed to be a building inspector or building official?
Yeah, it would probably be the building official at that point.
That's in here twice again under five. I, I know this was copied from somewhere, so I just.
Yep.
Okay, we can clean that up, I guess.
Yeah, we could clean that up for the next one.
So it's subdivision three and then item five under that. Says it again.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. Any further questions of staff? Chairman Johnson?
Do you have a ballpark estimate of how many vacant buildings there are in the city of Brainerd?
We just, I just reviewed it with our code officer today. The list appeared to be about 20. So more than kind of my initial projections. The other thing we'd probably do is coordinate with Brainerd Public Utilities to potentially review other properties or power's been potentially cut off and review it for property maintenance issues.
Okay, have we considered what, I mean, if it's 20 properties and it's 7,000, that's $140,000 a year we'd be bringing in on this fee, have we considered what we would be spending this money on? If it would be blight remediation or housing support or?
No considerations at this time. I know because this was taken from Minneapolis's ordinance, one thing that they do with some, some funds is potentially purchasing properties or trying to reclaimate some of these properties, but they do have a lot larger funding source than we do. So something we could, you know, bring to the next P and F committee meeting.
Because yeah, even with, even if it's $140,000, that's three or four scattered site replacement, demolition, empty lot, ready to build.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to talk about it.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, good idea. Any other questions of staff?
I apologize, I had one more.
Yeah, Mr. Chesak?
Thank you. So after, within one year, they essentially, the way I read this, that 7,000, initial 7,000 goes bye-bye, and then they get charged another seven. Is there any leeway in there, say, after 13 months, or is that just the way it is?
So if it's being charged yearly, more than likely, they're not speaking with staff. You know, if they do come into staff and let's say we have a reclamation, you know, essentially contract between the community development department and that person, and they need an extension, you know, that's something we'd maybe bring to safety and public works for consideration. As long as they're showing, you know, progress on the building, again, this really isn't a way to try to, you know, add additional funds, it's tried to try to get these properties fixed up. So the main issues are the ones that, you know, are either they purchase a property and they don't begin work, or it's a five-year project. This is to try to help speed that process up. And, and staff and I think city council will certainly be open to, to working with them.
So do you foresee, I think during the appeal process, they could maybe come back and say, you know, we waited too long or whatever, and they can maybe recoup that as long as they're making good faith to put it back into their property? That's always up to the council at that point, probably?
Exactly, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Tiffany Stengline?
As much as I really am excited by the idea of spending that money on reclamation and tearing down old buildings, the, the goal is that we don't have any money. We want the people to fix up their properties. So, I mean, I, the goal is that we don't have money. And I know that's kind of a bummer, Gabe, but that would, that would be ideal. So that's what, that's what we really want.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Okay, hearing none. We're going to look for the first reading of proposed ordinance 1569 and dispense with the actual reading, which a vote to dispense with the actual reading of the ordinance must be unanimous.
So moved.
Motion by O'Day, second by Chesak. Any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion passes unanimously. Next up is item 8B, an update on the orderly annexation discussions. Mr. Cranbeck, or Mr. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. So staff has had an initial conversation with Crow Wing County staff regarding the potential orderly annexation of the Riverside Drive corridor, using the city's existing water and sewer infrastructure kind of as a basis for the draft municipal boundaries. We also closed any potential dead ends and islands of parcels to create a contiguous area. Attached is the draft of the municipal boundary that was discussed, and county staff was supportive of the discussion, just moving forward from there. So next steps would be to identify the specific parcels to be included in a potential orderly annexation agreement, discussion about other details such as infrastructure, tax revenue, and likely other items. And we'll bring more information to a future meeting as available and as discussions occur.
Mr. Dean, I have a question on this, on this item. I believe there's other spots in the cities where past councils have deemed it, it, it's required to annex prior to hooking up to utilities, somewhere like on Easy Street? Is that correct? I mean, I don't think we have that everywhere, but I know we did on Riverside Drive, and I think we did on Easy Street or somewhere else out there, somewhere east of town?
Probably Wonderland Park.
Wonderland Park? Can you, can you bring that back as well, as to where those places are that if you're going to hook up to utilities, you, you can't do it and pay the 200%? You have to annex, like Riverside Drive. And we can always change that, but we should know where they're at. All right. Any questions of staff? Mr. Chesak?
I just wanted to comment, I believe, if I understand, you're suggesting that all properties that receive the public utility, water, sewer, that they have to annex.
Oh, no, 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 no. I just want you all to know, I know of two places.
Okay.
Riverside Drive and Wonderland Park. I, and I'm not 100% clear on those two. But I, we all read the minutes from the Riverside Drive one, but I just wanted to make sure that the council knows there are some places where you don't have the option of the 200%. And it's primarily because there was a road project involved with the utilities.
Thank you.
Just so you know, it wasn't just to be mean. So there was lots of assessments that people paid. And, and then to make it fair to those people, they had, we'd established a connection fee, a somewhat moving target. Thank you. Any other questions of staff on this?
One here.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
No, I don't have a question as much as I just noticed something on that, on that map. Yeah, this one. It still has Mill Park dedicated, dedicated as park area.
I appreciate you, because I was trying not to be distracted by that. Thank you.
So if we get that tidied up, that'd be nice.
Who notices that?
I do, and I appreciate it, Gabe.
We put the right man on the tree committee.
We're going to cut the tree down here, pretty.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, for that astute observation. Next up is item nine, public forum. There's his time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda, it's the intention of the council. We'd like to have you keep it to three to five minutes. It's 8:33. I will open the public forum and ask if anybody in the audience or online wishes to bring something before the council that we're not currently discussing. I'll ask a second time. Anybody wishes to come forward? And I'll ask a third and final time. And we will close the public forum at 8:34, and we will move on to staff reports. Let's start off to the right with Fire Chief Holmes. Anything from the police department? Who's online? Nobody's online tonight, so we'll go to ITGIS Strong.
Nothing's nice.
All right. Finance Director Hillman?
Yes, I just wanted to announce that the 2023 audit will be presented at the first meeting in August. The auditors cannot make the July 1st meeting, and they were already scheduled for another meeting, the second meeting in July. But everything will be submitted by the June 30th deadline.
Thank you, Connie. Jesse Dean, our City Engineer, Public Works Director.
Nothing to answer.
Cut it out. James Cranbeck, Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items here. So staff will conclude the sound study related to the crypto mining facility before the next council meeting, and will bring the item back for consideration for the interim use permit for outdoor storage. Also want to update a few items from the EDA. The EDA did authorize a facade improvement grant, which is a 50% matching grant, for up to $5,000 for any commercial, mixed use, or industrial use in the city. The EDA has authorized $20,000 that they're funding to be allocated towards this program this year. So their, Bladek is working with the EDA on distribution of this grant, and there will be some advertising coming forward soon when the, the grant eligibility opens. Also, the EDA has also recommended an expansion of the River to Rails District, essentially east to west city boundary along Washington Street, and then properties along South Sixth Street down to Buffalo Hills Lane. This would potentially be called the central business district incentive policy. So this will be considered at the next city council meeting, based on the recommendation from the EDA.
Thank you, Mr. Cranbeck. Anything from the legal department?
Nothing here, thank you.
Thank you. HR Director Schubert, and from our Public Utilities Interim Director Wassell?
I would just like to thank City Administrator Broyles for inviting me to the WJJY Community Connect Noon Show and having me present the, the ongoings of the Brainerd Public Utilities.
Thank you very much. And we'll end up with our City Administrator Broyles.
Just a couple of things, Mr. President, thank you. We do have a meeting later this week. GMP has finished its first round of vetting for the Public Utilities Director position. So the work group will be meeting with GMP later this week to discuss the names that they're going to advance that they recommend. So we got that this week. Also, just want to mention, just kind of, this is, this is more for my benefit. I always look forward to, to getting feedback and especially formal feedback. So I've been here for four months now. I've got a six-month review coming up in two months. I don't know exactly the mechanics of how that's going to happen. I'll work with Chris and figure out how that's going to happen, but I'm looking forward to getting some formal feedback from council, so.
Wouldn't be so happy.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Next up is the Honorable Mayor Bedeau.
Thank you, Councilman Bevins. Well, for those of you following along tonight, we learned that in 2024, it is more complicated to hook up to water than it is to be hooked up with marijuana. So that's fun. Tonight, we have a proclamation. So I'm going to read, which is always fun for everyone, including myself. But we have a proclamation here in front of us for the Brainerd Gardening Club. So I will read this to you here. Whereas the Brainerd Gardening Club was founded in 1924 and has since dedicated itself to the beautification and ecological preservation of community, and whereas for 100 years, the members of the Brainerd Gardening Club have volunteered their time, expertise, and resources to create and maintain public gardens, educate the community on horticultural practices, and promote the benefits of gardening and environmental stewardship. And whereas the Brainerd Gardening Club has played a significant role in the enhancement of our city's natural landscape, contributing to the well-being and aesthetic pleasure of our residents and visitors, and whereas the Brainerd Gardening Club, who have fostered a sense of community, collaboration, and pride through its various projects, events, and partnerships with local schools, organizations, and government entities, and now, therefore, I, Dave Bedeau, Mayor of the City of Brainerd, hereby proclaim, June 19th, 2024, a day to celebrate the Brainerd Gardening Club on this momentous occasion. We recognize the remarkable achievements and enduring legacy, and extend our heartfelt gratitude to the past and present members of, for their unwavering dedication and service. And it says right there that I so set my hand and affixed the seal. So it has happened. The seal hasn't been fixed, the hand has been set. So thank you to the Brainerd Gardening Club, past and present members, for all of that. And then lastly, just super fast, Fourth of July, quickly approaching. So if you are interested in being involved in the festivities, we're going to have a ton of fun down there, we always do.[1755.82] Parades coming up. Get your floats ready. We got some cool ones this year. Fireworks, as always. Going to be a big show. Some are saying the biggest. Some are saying the best. You will also enjoy that. But I do want to ask, if you are interested in volunteering for helping during the Fourth of July, I know a guy that would like your help. So I especially like families. Families are great, specifically during the fireworks. You and your family can set up just outside the, the fence. You get to break the rules a little bit, sit outside the fence with you and your family, put a little vest on you. Get you, get you introduced to telling people, don't go this way, please go that way. But it's just a lot of fun, and we just need some bodies to make sure that everybody is safe and having a good time. But of course, the Fourth of July will always happen on the Fourth of July. And we expect to have a, a big turnout. And if you're interested in helping with that, please contact Brainerd Community Action, and we'll get you connected with that. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's start with our two chairs. We'll start with Mike O'Day for council member.
I just want to ask if the vests are fireproof or bomb proof?
The vests are of a high viz quality. Beyond that, I cannot state whether or not they will or will not turn to dust when hit by flames.
So no. End of, end of report.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson.
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Kara Terry?
Just a quick note. Chief Holmes and I are on an event planning committee for Chad Robisho. The presentation is called Saving Lives, Restoring Families, and Changing Legacies. It's for all of our first responders, our law enforcement, and all of our veterans. It will be held at the Gitchy on September 19th from 6:00 to 8:00. You can find information on the Sheriff's Office Facebook page. That's where you can purchase tickets. The event is actually free. But I believe it'll be a really valuable event for people to attend.
Thank you. Chief Stunich?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Tiffany Stengline?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Chesek?
I wondered if I could ask a question about the EDA meeting?
I, I think you can, sure. Our staff, Lee is on, is James Cranbeck.
Yes, there was no, if I understand correctly, there was no purchase agreement approved? This, the, the follow-up to the first one, the one that expired, they, they did not approve that. They did nothing. So I'm wondering how that affects the timeline with the interim use permit? And, and I know there's information coming back from Public Utilities, but I don't believe there was a meeting by the EDA scheduled before their regularly scheduled meeting, which would be two months from the previous one.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that. So no action was taken by the EDA. I know Public Utilities Director Patrick Wasso talked about issues with their contract or the, I guess, transferring it to AnChing, which is the other company. So staff is following up with, with Patrick on that. I believe electrical plans are close to being finalized for that. And then the attorneys for BPU are considering to make sure that everything's okay with the transfer of that ownership interest with, within there. Once that's done, staff will be recommending the EDA hold a special meeting to consider that contract. There are, there is some language within that purchase and development agreement that answers do have to be given, so you can't really wait for the next EDA meeting for that. And then secondly, the interim use permit is a separate issue from the purchase and development agreement. The city still does have to give an answer for the interim use permit. VCV is the owner of that property, and the application is sufficient. So that's kind of separate from the purchase and development agreement. But both of them do have, would have to be potentially passed before they could do any type of construction.
Mr. Chesek, anything else?
I've never seen anything so confusing in my entire life. End of report.
Thank you very much. And I just want to put a shout out to, I know there's a lot, always a lot of excitement on the Fourth of July and the parade and the fireworks and all the stuff. But for those of us a little more sophisticated, there's also Arts in the Park, which is a phenomenal event. I've been, it's always crazy around Gregory Park and well worth it. It's a fantastic event. I hope you all come out for that. Park on my lawn. Bring your dog for the mayor's dog, for the mayor's yard. End of report. We are now looking for a motion to adjourn. To close, to lay, ah, hang on, I got to read this. To closed labor negotiation strategy session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.03 subdivision 1B, to prepare for negotiations with IBEW, Public Utilities Teamsters, and the local law enforcement unions. Thank you, Mr. Stunich, for the motion. Is there a second? Second. Second by Chesek. Any discussion? Hearing none. We will take a six-minute break to clear the room and move into.